Stand by for countdown.
Do you have copies for them?
Ten count, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, September 7th, 2022 Board of County Commissions meeting. I am Nicole Gibbs, the Community Relations Specialist. Cedric County Zoo's premier fundraiser, Zubaly, will be held this Saturday, September 10th, from 6:00 to midnight. Enjoy live music, delicious drinks, and the electrical bites from local establishments at Wichita's wildest fundraiser. Tickets are $175 and can be purchased at scz.org. Open Streets ICT is happening on Sunday, September 18th, from noon to 5:00 at 601 East Douglas. This free community-building event, for which attends of all ages and fitness levels, promotes healthy, active living and social engagement. While you're there, stop by and say hello to Cedric County EMS, Fire, Calm Care, Corrections, Health Department, and the Sheriff's Office. Cedric County Calm Care is providing an online mental health first aid class on Friday, September 23rd, from 9:00 to 4:00. Participants who are interested are required to complete a two-hour online course prior to this training. For more information and to register, please contact donnetabernathy@cedric.gov. Now Julie Simpson and Jonathan Marr from Emergency Management are here to give you an update on the upcoming WIA test.
Martin, Julie, I understand you were out late last night.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners. Yeah, it was a little bit of a late night. More so Jonathan was out there and I was in the background. But all is good. I just want to briefly speak of a Federal Communication Commission Wireless Emergency Alert Test that's going to happen here in the city of Wichita on Monday, September 12th at 3:00 PM. Jonathan's going to give you the specific details, but this is a first-of-a-kind test that the FCC and FEMA and us are doing to test the actual geo-target component of the Wireless Emergency Alert Test. So we're actually really excited. We're one of about 40 jurisdictions that were selected to participate in this test. And I'll have Jonathan come up here now and kind of give the specifics on what to expect on the 12th at 3:00 PM.
Morning Jonathan.
Morning Commissioners, how are you today? All right, well, as Julie said, on Monday, September 12th at 3:00 PM, Emergency Management will be sending out a Wireless Emergency Alert to a half-square-mile area of downtown. These Wireless Emergency Alerts, it's only, the technologies have only been around for about 10 years, and it's never been studied, like the efficiency, the accuracy, the speed. We don't know who gets it, how fast they get it, and this is an opportunity for us to measure that. The Wireless Emergency Alerts is a, it's a true public and private partnership between the Department of Homeland Security, the FCC, FEMA, and all of the cellphone carriers. In order for the alert to hit your phone, we have to generate the message on our side, send it through an aggregator. It goes to the cellphone companies, and they have to figure out where you are in the world so that you can get the alert that you need. And as Julie said, we were selected among 40 other jurisdictions to participate in this unprecedented study. It's a pretty huge deal for us. As part of the MOU with the FCC, we've identified a half-square-mile geo-target downtown that encompasses many of the county and city buildings. We've recruited about 150 volunteers to serve as a control group, and we are still recruiting volunteers between the City of Wichita employees and county employees. They can sign up, and an email that's been sent to them. This test is being, is designed to measure the percentage of the audience that receives the alert. You know, we hear a lot of stories that when we send these WIA alerts out, that two people will be sitting next to each other, and one person will receive the alert, and the other person wouldn't receive the alert. But we're not sure why that happens. So this study is intended to measure that, as well as the speed of delivery. We're going to click the button at exactly 3:00 PM, and it could take anywhere from a minute to several minutes to many minutes for your phone to receive that. And there's a bunch of different variables involved in the middle of all that. We're also testing the bleed over on the geo-target. So we can draw a line on a map, a square, a polygon, a circle, any sort of shape, and we can warn all of the people inside that shape on the map. This test is designed to measure the bleed over. How much outside of that geo-target does the message bleed out to? And the FCC has established a tenth of a mile as a acceptable bleed over for the cellphone companies. The half-square-mile geo-target is going to be, the northern boundary will be Central, the southern boundary will be Douglas, and it'll be between Topeka and just about the river over there. Inside the geo-target, we have the Ruffin Building, Wichita City Hall, the Reagan Building, Brownsen Porter, Wichita PD Central Bureau, and there's many other businesses that are inside the geo-target. So when we send this at Monday at 3:00 PM, everyone inside this box is going to get an emergency alert on their phone. They need to be aware of it. As part of this test, we'll be sending a link inside the test, and we're asking not only our control group volunteers, but also the general public, who are willing to participate, to click the link or copy and paste it into their browser and complete the survey that's in there. We're trying to measure who's receiving this, where they were, what time they received it, and collect all this data that we can use to improve the system in the future. And again, we'll be heavily marketing this through the media over the next week. And I think that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Well Jonathan, I don't see anything right now, but thank you. And you're still seeking volunteers, correct?
We are, yeah. We'll be seeking volunteers all week, and we're providing volunteer training twice a day.
For those that are listening, how do they get in touch with you to volunteer?
We have sent an email through City of Wichita and through our communications already with how they can sign up to be a control group volunteer.
Okay, but those that are listening to us today on TV and Facebook and so forth, do you know how that they're going to be able to volunteer?
Right.
Hello again. We'll be sending out a news release this afternoon with information on how to sign up. On top of that, we'll also have it on social media to advertise as well.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you Jonathan and Julie. Next up, we have Stephanie Birmingham, and she's going to give us a COVID-19 update.
Morning Stephanie.
Hello everyone, I'm Stephanie Birmingham, your COVID Public Information Officer. We do have a new COVID booster headed to Cedric County within the next week or so, so I want to get you up to date on that. We are excited. It was just approved last week by the FDA, the CDC, and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So as soon as it arrives, we are good to go to start administering it. This is a new bivalent booster, which means it not only protects against the original coronavirus strain, it also will protect against the Omicron BA4 and BA5 variants. The Pfizer version is designed for anyone 12 and up. Moderna is only for adults 18 and up. You do have to be fully vaccinated to get this booster. And what we mean by fully vaccinated, you have to have that two-shot primary series. It doesn't matter which vaccine maker you got that series from, whether it's Moderna, Pfizer, you can then get the booster that's coming out in a week or so. It does have to be at least two months after your last shot. So whether it was the primary series or a booster, we want you to wait at least two months for the best effectiveness. If you have just had COVID and you're recovering, we ask that you wait three months, because after having COVID, of course, you have some natural immunity. After three months, though, then it starts to wane. The new booster is expected to ship the week of September 12th, so we could see it anytime next week. And we'll, of course, let you know as soon as we can start giving those shots. Until then, though, we are not authorized anymore to give the existing booster to anyone 12 and up. Kids, though, 5 to 11, can still get the existing booster. So right now, our community is ranked by the CDC at being medium risk for transmission. We do see cases ticking up again. The week of August 28th, we had 573 confirmed cases. There are probably more that are being tested at home that we don't know about. But that's up from, two weeks before that, 454 cases. And again, our vaccination rate, not great. We're at 54.5% of Cedric County residents that are fully vaccinated. 56% of Kansans are fully vaccinated, and we're a good 12%, 13% behind the national average. So the takeaway today is if you are fully vaccinated, we encourage you to get this new booster when it comes out. If you are not fully vaccinated, please do so. We believe with kids back in school, the holidays are just around the corner, believe it or not, we do think COVID will increase. So this booster is good protection to keep us healthy through that stage. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks Stephanie. At 573, that's only ones that went to someplace like our Health Department or WSU MDL to get tested. So all these home tests are not included in that. So the number is likely much higher than that.
Those are PCR tests, not those at home. So you're correct.
And also, I heard that we're only getting like 3,000 doses in this initial batch that's coming into the county. Are all those going to the Health Department, or are they going to places like Walgreens and Dylan's and Walmart and so forth?
I believe those are coming to the Health Department. I will have to double-check on that, but yeah, and then we're hoping to get more later.
Okay, so if they're all going to the Health Department, they have to call the Health Department in order to be able to get an appointment. They can't walk in?
People wanting the shots, correct. Yes, they need to call the West Central Clinic, and that's 660-7300, to make an appointment. Our mobile clinics, at some point, will start giving those boosters. Of course, they can't now until they get the new ones, but we'll be sure to publicize all the different outlets that will be giving those shots.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Thanks Stephanie.
Thank you.
Commissioners, looking at today's agenda, there will be two proclamations. A report of the 2021 suicide data, a conditional use zoning request for a property located at West 21st Street North and North 151st Street West, a review of a letter intent for a FEMA brick grant, a proposed compensation plan for Calm Care, a primary election update, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. With that Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thanks Nicole, I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today, those that are joining us online and on KPTS. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Actually, we had no one sign up online or send any comments in online, so we'll go to public agenda. We also have a zoning case today. There are a couple people that are signed up for that. If they would like to speak during the zoning case, I'll give them an opportunity to speak at that time rather than the beginning of the meeting. So Mr. Brooks, I've already talked to you, you would wish to speak during the zoning case, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Next individual is Patrick Penn. Welcome Patrick to our meeting. I should have recognized you to begin with. I try and always recognize the elected in our office, and Patrick Penn serves in the House of Representatives for the state of Kansas. Welcome. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Good morning Mr. Chairman. My name is Patrick Penn. I'm out of the northeast side of Wichita. I serve as a state representative for the House 85th District. I want to thank you all for giving me this time to be here today. I'm not coming in my capacity for the state of Kansas today, though. I'm coming as a citizen of Wichita and Cedric County. And Mr. Commissioner, I just wanted to very briefly make a statement. Because we actually push this statement out, is my understanding, to the Wichita Eagle, but it was not published. I'm not sure why that did not occur. However, I think it's something that is important, and it probably needs to be said. So if you'll bear with me, and thank you for the five minutes of time. This is a joint statement from the Cedric County Black Republican Council, from the Hispanic, Republican National Hispanic Assembly of Cedric County, and this regards Commissioner Lacy Cruz's racist incident. The joint statement reads as follows. It just pains me a little bit to have to say this. Racism and racist comments have no place in Cedric County, period. We are appalled after reading the racist comments made by Cedric County Commissioner Lacy Cruz toward a black woman bartender at Wichita's XY Bar on the evening of Saturday, August 20th. Official reporting of her own words revealed that alcohol released Mrs. Cruz's inhibitions and exposed the deep-seated prejudice that she has that are incompatible with the Commissioner's mission to be respectful to and represent all of her constituents. Calling anyone a racially charged name or epithet is far beyond the pale of behavior expected from leaders in our community, especially a county official elected to represent them. As reported in the news, and that'll be the Wichita Eagle article, "An unfortunate but consistent pattern from Lacy Cruz has culminated in her hurling a derisive racist comment to a black woman who would not cower to Cruz." What is further appalling is that Commissioner Cruz has continued to try to play the victim and shift the blame to others for her own actions. Rather than accepting responsibility plainly for her comments, Cruz offers up a non-apology in the paper and a word salad to diminish the pain and disrespect that she alone chose to cause with her racist comments. As a Commissioner who represents the largest minority-populated district of blacks and Hispanics here in Cedric County, we find her wholly unfit and totally inadequate to properly represent our communities of color. Lacy Cruz gets no pass for her racism. Cruz says that she's a member of the Board of Kansas African American Museum. We demand that she immediately resign from this board, as she has demonstrated her inability to care for those that she claims to represent. And Mr. Chairman, we also call for Cruz's immediate resignation from the Cedric County Commission, as her comments are a disgrace to the entire citizenry of Cedric County. Anyone elected to represent us, anyone elected to represent us must represent all of us. And Lacy Cruz, through her contemptuous words and actions, has shown that she clearly does not. This is written in unity from the Cedric County Black Republican Council and the Republican National Hispanic Assembly of Cedric County. Did you have any questions, Ms. Commissioner?
Representative Penn, I do not see any questions at this time.
Okay. The words that I now speak are my own, and not the statement of the particular groups. I condemn the words that were spoken to that bartender in the highest, the highest and most stringent terms, completely uncalled for and unacceptable, Commissioner Cruz. Had that been my wife, would you have called her Sheena, Queen of the Jungle? Had that been my daughters, would you have called them Sheena, Queen of the Jungle? I understand that you say that it wasn't Shaniqua, and that it wasn't Chiquita. All are horrible and beneath the dignity of this board. To come back and say that these are the things that you've done in the black community so that you get a pass, I'm here to tell you you don't. We're outraged, and I stand by the statement of the commissions, of the organizations. I stand by my own words, and you all know how to reach me if you have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is Gary Dick. I understand you want to speak during the zoning case, so we'll wait till that point. And I have Elder Dozier. Elder Dozier? Is Elder Dozier here? Are you the elder that wishes to speak before the commission? Yes, please approach the podium, state your name for the record. You will have five minutes.
Good morning everyone. I am Elder Josie Wright, elect Pastoral Minister of Yes for Christ Jesus Ministries, Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries. Our mission statement is in lieu of spiritual growth and economic development for all. Good morning everyone. Today is September 7th, 2022. I am standing before you today on behalf of the City of Wichita Advisory, and I have three things to address. And thank you, David, for giving me this opportunity to speak even five minutes before my brethren. Number one, we are approaching a change for the airport, the name in general, airport name change, when that time is nigh. We are sure that King Miquest International is an appropriate name that will carry on the Wichita area airport nationally for the city of Wichita, Cedric County, Kansas. King Miquest International is what it will be during the airport name change. Miquest Todd is the first wellness missionary parachutist from the mission, from the state of Kansas, United States Blue and Brown Corps recipient, United States Special Force Operation, and United States American Achievement Medal. Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries deed to register a state formerly known as the Detention Facility or Sheriff's Office located at 141 West Elm, Cedric County, Kansas, 67203. Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries is asking, once again, the deed to register for that estate in the name of Christ Jesus. It would really alleviate some of the economic strain going on within the detention facility, let alone within our downtown communities concerning lodging and the economy in general, jobs, career goals. And we understand that job security within the 400 employees that make up the Sheriff's Office, you know, would be affected in some way, shape, form, or fashion as well. What this Leadership Academy will bring, again, counseling spiritual growth and economic development for all, ages five years old and over. The capacity level is 1,200 when it comes to students, right now currently inmates, so to speak, adult detention. Between now and the first day of the academy, which would be July 3rd, 2023, what we're doing is regulating the capacity level in a legal fashion, all right? Even if we have to place a halt on the entrance. I mean, there are correctional facilities, detention facilities on the outskirts of Cedric County in the event of a crime in that area. Our church group, Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries, we certify and license in four different areas, so that would be honorable unto all who would sign up and come from miles around, even nationwide, because of advertisement, to attend this academy. Thirdly, we have an Office of Appointment Missionary Release going on today, September 7th, 2022, at 1,300 hours, 1 o'clock PM, at Cedric County Detention Center facility located at 141 West Elm Street, Cedric County, Kansas, 67203, about 500 feet west of this particular location, Cedric County Courthouse. So Alumni Missionary for Christ, one of our alumni, there are four in general, myself and three others. And this is a family-owned church group, very small, but we've ordained at least, it's four of us. We've ordained about nine or 10 others, you know, since the inception of services, okay? And Alumni Missionary for Christ, youth missionary Carrie Grant is his name, and awaiting exit release today. Mr. Grant has served greater than 1,044 days, counseling marriage principle values to men and women of all walks of faith, an assignment that his mother had given him on behalf of the church group, all right, being a single parent herself, all right? Marriage principle values is very important, especially in young adults today. And yes, he's been there, not as a punishment, but also a part of our research assignment, which did pour into the state of Kansas with ARPA funding since 2019.
Ma'am, your time is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, sir, definitely. The Office of Appointment Exit Release for missionary Carrie Grant is in lieu of Kansas Statute Amendment 652812, Kansas Board of Healing Art Marriage Principle Trade Program. Results of our research project poured $3.5 million for the Wichita Transit Station, along with $180 million to assist research at Wichita State University. And there are no real legal reasons to hold missionary Carrie Grant, and, well, he has a decent place of registered office to exit. All right, so those are very important aspects to address when it comes to the city of Wichita, and why it is that it is very important, a cleave to pastoral ministry and not-for-profit organizations that show a visible sign of alleviating economic deprivation. In the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord. God bless you, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I don't see any questions at the time. And that's all for public agenda. Move to receive and file. We have a motion and a seconded discussion. See, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of August 17th, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from August 12th. Move to approve. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring September 11 Day of Service.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas September 11, 2022 marks the 21st anniversary of the attacks, the attacks that took place on September 11, 2001, and whereas in the aftermath of the tragedy, the families of the victims came together and turned a national day of mourning into a national day of service where Americans unite and give back to their communities through service. And whereas this year, we ask everyone to honor those that we lost by uniting in service to rekindle the spirit of unity that swept our nation after that tragic day. Through service, we can come together despite our differences and unite in a collective effort to serve our community. We can stand together and lift each other up, neighbor with neighbor, just as we did more than 20 years ago. And whereas, we invite everyone to honor, serve, and unite on this September 11 Day of Service. Demonstrate the spirit of unity in your community by volunteering in honor of September 11 and invite someone from a different party or background to serve with you. Share your service and experience on social media using the hashtag #911Day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 11, 2022 as September 11 Day of Service and ask the residents of Cedric County to volunteer in the community to commemorate that fateful day, honoring those who lost their lives and our men and women in uniform who courageously responded to help those in need we will never forget. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, move to approve. We have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
There are going to be a number of events taking place as a result of September 11. We hope that you can participate in those events. I have talked to our Facilities Department and I understand we're going to light the courthouse green in remembrance of that day. I hope that's still working. Also, with those of you that have worn the uniform or care about our military men and women that served our country, the Veterans Administration is going to hold a car show on September 11. I think it's from 10 until 1 that day out at the VA. So if you have a cool car, you want to come out and participate in that, I think it's $20 to sign up to put your car in the car show, but if not, come out, men, enjoy it and say thanks to the men and women that are, have served our country and that are at the Dole VA. I don't see anything else. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring Suicide Prevention Week.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Meitzner to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This proclamation dated today. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 and 1/2 minutes with an average of 125 deaths by suicide a day, about every four days, someone in Cedric County dies by suicide. And whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had a mental disorder at the time of their death, and often these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. And whereas far too many Cedric County residents and Kansans die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable, in 2021, 92 Cedric County residents died by suicide. And whereas the mission of the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition is to promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Cedric County. And whereas in Cedric County, help is available by calling the suicide prevention hotline 24 hours a day, seven days per week at 316-660-7500, that's 660-7500, or by calling only three digits, 988. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 4 through 10, 2022 as National Suicide Prevention Week. The topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education. I call upon the residents of our community to join us in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously, and knowing how to respond. It is important that we challenge ourselves to gain an understanding of the risks associated with suicide and to recognize Suicide Prevention Week this year, dated September 7, 2022, signed by David Dennis, Chair, Board of the County Commission of Cedric County. I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept is Dr. Claus, Dr. Nicole.
She's not a baby bear's player, is that what?
Okay.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much. From the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition, we just want to genuinely thank the Board of County Commissioners, the county, and the city of Wichita for the support that they've shown us and the entire community over the last 20 years, but particularly through this last period that's been difficult but insightful, and we've seen some impressive growth and community coming together to support each other, which is our goal in everything that we do.
Very good. Thank you very much for being here. We're going to get a little briefing on the data here next, actually. Thank you very much. Are you ready for the next item?
Yep. New Business. Item D, Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition 2021 Suicide Data Report.
Dr. Claus, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Claus, and I'm here today representing the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition to share last year's suicide data with you. I want to start by acknowledging the partnerships with several county agencies and the contributions of our team who make this report possible. We lost 92 Cedric County residents to suicide last year, and this number is down compared to the last few years. This was a rate of 17.9 per 100,000, which is down from 20.4 per 100,000 the previous However, it's notable that Cedric County rates remain significantly higher than the And in 2021, we saw decreases in suicide rates for all of our age groups except the 64 and older age group. Similar to previous years, males make up the majority of suicide deaths in Cedric County. It was 86% males this past year, and the overall decrease in suicide rates is accounted for by this decrease in male deaths last year. Female deaths actually increased just a little bit. Firearms continue to be the most common method of suicides at 63% of cases this past year. All methods of death decreased from the previous year. And 40% of our deaths had a known history of mental illness, especially depression and anxiety. 48% had a known history of suicidal ideation, and 20% had a known history of previous suicide attempts. 36% had a known history of medical illness, and 29% of our suicide decedents had a known history of substance misuse. When we review the life stressors that are noted in the autopsy report, we find that relationship stressors are most common in younger individuals who die by suicide, whereas physical health stressors are most common in older individuals who die of suicide. This graph shows the past five years of data combined, and in 2021, we saw the same patterns that we've seen in previous years. Of note, we had a higher percentage of veterans in our suicide death group this year, accounting for 19% of deaths. Typically, it's closer to 11 or 12%, so that was up a bit this year. And this past year, the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition and our partners have provided a variety of trainings for community members and healthcare professionals to address the issue of suicide in our community. In July of this year, the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline went live with the new 988 number in order to increase access and support for people experiencing mental health distress with an easy-to-remember phone number to call when needed support. This crisis could include thoughts of suicide, but it could also include mental health or substance use crises or any other kind of emotional distress. Everyone in the community can play a role in suicide prevention by knowing the signs and risk factors for suicide and by taking them seriously and getting help for yourself or for a loved one. And if you'd like to become involved in reducing suicides in Cedric County, there are several upcoming opportunities to get involved, including participating in the Community Health Improvement Plan, attending mental health first aid classes, or attending our upcoming Party for Prevention or Suspenders for Hope Walk Run that are coming up within the next month. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, Doctor, thank you very much. I know that the county lobbied the legislature pretty severely on the 988 to make sure that the funding was there. It was kind of touch and go for a couple moments during the legislative session, but I'm very happy that that got funded. I'm hoping that that continues to be funded in the future. I'm very proud of our com care because they're the ones that actually handle it for all of the 316 area code, and if other areas get overloaded, I understand that we can transfer between the different regions in order to be able to make sure that someone is always available to answer 988 when someone calls. But again, we need the public to be informed and appreciate your helping inform so that they can watch for the signs. And Commissioner Howell has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, you know, every time I read this report, I'm also surprised by some of the data, and you surprised me yet again this year. Did you say out of the 92 suicides in Cedric County in 2021, was it? That only four of those were female and 86, I'm sorry, six were female and 86 were male? Is that what you said?
Um, I'll look back at those numbers so I make sure I get them right. The, yes, 86% were male.
86%? That's, okay.
Yeah. So females were 14%, so whatever that is of 92.
That makes a little bit more sense. I just, I thought maybe I heard that wrong. Thank you for clarifying that. With regard to the, there's a couple of comments in here I think are worthy of some It says 40% had a known history of mental illness. Do we break that down further? Mental illness is a broad category. Do we have details, what type of mental illness we're talking about?
We do, and it sort of depends on what is reported in the autopsy and what's reported by the friends or family members. Most commonly, depression is reported, and anxiety is the second most common type of mental illness that's reported.
And it also talks about substance abuse, alcohol, and drugs. I think that's a very noteworthy takeaway from this report. And it also talks about the causation, life stressors primarily relationships and physical health problems are the two primary areas. And so I guess, I say, as we want to combat suicide trends in Cedric County, or at least increasing trends in Cedric County, we ought to have some focus on those two things, I think, trying to help people when they're dealing with relationship problems or physical health problems, especially if they have problems with alcohol and drugs. I don't know how strategic our plan is here in Cedric County. I'm not really aware of exactly how we try to prevent someone from going down this path. I know we have 988, and that's wonderful. One of my, one of my questions is, before someone gets to that point, what are we doing in Cedric County to keep someone from getting to that, getting to that point? Are we having some strategic plan that deals with, you know, someone's having relationship problems, how can they call that number and get some help with that? Or if they're having physical health problems, get some encouragement in that area? So is there anything strategic we're doing to deal with those issues on the front end, I guess?
Sure, and I want to be cautious about the term causation because we know that people who died of suicide had these particular life stressors going on. We don't know that that's necessarily what caused their death. The cause of suicide is often multifactorial, but, you know, it is important to address the, these particular stressors that are going on, and that's why the 988 crisis line is designed for any type of crisis, which could include those relationship crises and the associated emotional distress that you're speaking of. I would also highlight the efforts to implement zero suicide approaches within our healthcare and mental healthcare systems, and that would especially target those individuals who have physical health concerns, which we know 36% of our deaths had a medical illness, and so physicians are in a prime position to screen for suicide and address suicide risk.
Without naming names, I'm thinking of someone, and anybody who's listening to me right now will probably know who I'm talking about, but I, we, our family had a, someone we know that did this this last year, and they never made a phone call, and looking backwards, I think possibly they had some physical illness perhaps, and maybe some relationship problems in their, in their situation specifically, so, but they never made an attempt to call anybody. There was, it was completely, it was a surprise to everyone when this happened, and one of my curiosities, I guess, is how, you know, do we ever follow up with people who do call the, the two helplines, 660-7500 or 988? Do we ever follow up and connect, you know? How do, how do these people turn out five years later, for example? Is there any type of data to say, when they receive help from those, those resources, that we somehow have, you know, caused, helped them, I guess, find a way to solve this without doing this tragic outcome?
I'm so sorry for your loss, and to answer your question, yeah, I, I think com care could better tell you about the, the follow-up procedures that they use after crisis calls. I know sometimes there are additional attempts to reach out and, and make sure that people are being connected to services that they need or receiving any help that they want. I don't know of any efforts to reach out, you know, five years later and do that kind of longitudinal follow-up. That would, would require some, some additional resources, I'm sure.
The stat that jumps off the page here at me is it says 20% of deaths had a known history of previous suicide attempts. So this may be the first attempt by someone, and they, they may not make a phone call because, again, that would be a, you know, them reaching out, I guess I would, I would consider that to be them contemplating this, and then, and then maybe later on, they, they go through with it. So 20% is a low number, and to me, it's, again, one of the stats that jumps off the page at me. So I just say this, we have a lot of work to do, and I am, I'm glad to hear the numbers did go down a little bit recently. I know that through the COVID pandemic, we were very concerned how the numbers would probably be increasing. I guess 2020 was a terrible year, but since then, numbers have tapered off somewhat, so at least that's moving in the right direction. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate you presenting the report for us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and for all the work that you guys are doing in our community. It really is just, it makes an incredible impact. I just wanted to mention that next Tuesday... I just wanted to mention that next Tuesday, at the Advanced Learning Library, there is suicide prevention in our community with Suspenders for Hope. I know there'll be a lot of great speakers, Robin Chadwick from Ascension, I'll be speaking. I think Maggie Ballard with the City will be speaking. So that'll be a really good event, too, that we've shared on our social media from the county, but maybe we can get that shared again, so we can just put a reminder out, and hopefully we'll get a good turnout. But it sounds like there's a good number already signed up, so looking forward to that. Thank you again for all the work you guys do.
Fabulous. There are so many great events going on this month in honor of Suicide Prevention Month, and that one didn't make it onto my slide, but thank you for noting that.
Well, Dr. Kraus, thank you very much for being here today. It's important that we briefly know the signs. It's important to follow up with that and know what you can do if you recognize the signs. So thanks for briefing us on that. And Mr. Manager, I do have one question yet, though. We talked about a fellowship with KU School of Medicine some time back, and that's going to help us a little bit with some of the mental health issues in Sedgwick County, but nothing has happened at this point. So when are we going to see something where that we can, I know the city of Wichita is looking at helping fund the fellowship. We were talking about it, but when are we going to have a vote on that?
Chairman, we're getting details, just the logistics of the application for the money from KU. I, I talked with Tim, I don't know if he's in the back or has anything to add, but we had reached out to them over time, and the last time I checked, last time I checked, which was last week, we were still waiting details from them. So we'll continue to work through that and get that in front of you.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you all for being here today. We appreciate the briefing. I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second day discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E0N 2022-00033, Zone Change Request in the County from RR Rule Residential to TF3 Two Family Residential and LC Limited Commercial for Duplex and Commercial Development on Property Located on the South Side of West 21st Street North and on the West Side of North 151st Street West, 15601 West 21st Street North.
Thank you. And before Scott gets into his briefing, I want to declare that I have had ex parte contact on this issue, and I'll open it up for any other commissioners that may have had ex parte contact.
I don't think I've had any, not at all.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Scott, you ready to brief?
You bet. Thank you, sir. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because valid protests have been submitted against the application. And one quick note that I'd like to make is that we do have a typo on the front page of the staff report, and I apologize for that. This is in fact not a conditional use, this is a rezoning. So the language is all the same, except for it's simply just not a conditional use, it's a zoning application. In terms of the request, the applicants are requesting to rezone to TF3 Two Family Residential and LC Limited Commercial zoning. The applicants have indicated it's their intention to develop the site with duplexes and/or single-family residences on the majority of the site, and then commercial uses in the northeast corner. And I'll show you an illustration that shows where that would be. In terms of the property, subject site, as you can see here on the map, is located at the southwest corner of 21st Street and 151st Street. It is currently zoned RR Rule Residential, which you can see is the green color there, and is developed as a farm with land and agricultural use. And here's the aerial that shows that. Now, one note about this application is that they are requesting, applicants are requesting annexation by the city of Wichita. And this would be an island annexation because the site is not adjacent to the city. The first step in that process was undertaken or considered yesterday by the city council. They approved a resolution request of finding from you, from the Board of County Commissioners, that the proposed annexation meets the conditions identified in state statutes. And we anticipate that this would be brought forward to you for your consideration sometime in early October. So again, that's the annexation, and that is separate from this process today, which is the zoning, but is definitely related. And one thing to highlight, too, is that the evaluation, the criteria that you would use for a zoning case versus an annexation case, there are different criteria that are used. And so we will bring those forward for your consideration with that case. In terms of the context of this subject site, the majority of properties surrounding the subject site are zoned Rule Residential and in agricultural use. And you can see, that's the green area here. To the east, southeast, are properties that are zoned Rule Residential and in use for large lot, single-family residences. And you can see those kind of clustered here, down by 151st. Properties to the northeast and east are zoned, it says SF20, and in use for single-family residences and agricultural uses. I'll go back to the zoning map. And then to the west and north of the subject site are properties owned by the Kansas Department of Transportation for future development as part of the Northwest Bypass Freeway. So that is, would be property to be used for the freeway. And you can see those because they've, they've got an angle to them in terms of the property lines. In terms of reviews, on July 21st, the Planning Commission considered this application. The MAPC recommends approval of the request unanimously. It was 12 to 0, subject to the staff recommended protective overlay. One member of the public spoke in opposition with general concerns of the, about the increase in density, traffic, and development being out of character with the surrounding area. On July 25th, the Citizens Advisory Board for District 3 considered the application. The CAB recommended approval of the request by a 6 to 3 vote, subject to the staff recommended protective overlay. No members of the public spoke in opposition. The discussion by the CAB members raised concerns about promoting suburban sprawl, development out of character with the surrounding area, and loss of agricultural land. Please note that both the MAPC and CAB recommendations were subject to the approval of a protective overlay, which is described in the staff, in the staff report. The protective overlay included one, one condition, or one of those conditions, that the zoning resolution should not, shall not be published until annexation by the city of Wichita has occurred. So if it is approved per the recommendation by the MAPC, the zoning change would not take place unless it was annexed by the city of Wichita. Several protest petitions were submitted in opposition to the application, and that equaled approximately 34% of the protest area. So it exceeded the 20% threshold set by the state. Therefore, in order to approve the zone change request, it will require a supermajority or four, five votes by the commission. In terms of action by the Board of County Commissioners, it is recommended that the county commission adopt the findings of the MAPC, authorize the chairman to sign a prepared resolution. This would require, again, a four, five votes. Alternatives include denying the application by making alternative findings and overriding the MAPC. Because it's an override, it would require four or five votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration with a statement specifying the basis for that. And that would require a simple, simple majority. So with that, I will take you through some of the graphics and maps, and then stand for questions. So here you can see the existing zoning, and we've got little indications here about which general areas they're requesting the different zoning districts for. So TF3 for the majority of the site, and LC for the northeast corner. This is the aerial of the site. Again, you can see it's developed as a farm. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, the Wichita Future Growth Concept Map. You can see that it's identified as both new residential and new employment mix. This is a map showing utilities in the area, and also the city, Wichita city limits. You can see that those are located approximately half a mile to the east. This is a map or a graphic that was submitted by the applicants with the application. It shows in general the area that they are requesting the TF3 zoning for, and what it might look like in terms of a layout, and then also the area that they're proposing to rezone to LC. Please note that this property has not been through the plating process, so this is conceptual and could, definitely could change. This is the protest map. Again, it's over the 20% threshold, and you can see the areas in red are the valid protests within the protest area. Blue are valid protests that were submitted, but were outside of the protest area. Here are some photos from the area. There's the hospital to the north and east of the subject site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I did ask you a couple of questions when you briefed us individually, and I understand you have some of the answers. One of the questions was about, this is in the Renwick School District, and what is it going to do? Did you talk to superintendent and find out the impact on the schools?
Yeah. Planning staff reached out to the Renwick School District Superintendent, and the reply that we received back was that they were in favor of the development. So it was a brief reply that they provided via email, but overall, they were positive about the prospect of this development.
Okay. And the other question that I had, and I still don't know the answer to that, is the city has already met, and they have already agreed to annex this as an island annexation and send the request over to us. What I don't understand at this point is, why are we hearing this case, since it's the city of Wichita is going to be responsible for it?
Yes, sir. And it's a, it's a good question. It has to deal with the timing of, in which these came forward. So I'll defer to the applicant to talk about kind of their strategy in terms of the timing, but this is the timing in which we received them. So this is the order of process.
Well, when the applicant speaks, I'll, I'll ask the question again, so they're prepared now. The other question that I had, and you have answered it, I was interested, to me, you haven't answered it publicly. I was interested in the paving of 151st Street. And so the answer that I got back, well, I'll just let you give the answer, because I know it. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I believe the question was about 151st Street, which is currently a dirt street, and what, if any, paving requirements would apply. In our subdivision regulations, if the property is platted, which if they want to develop it with more homes or with a commercial use, they will have to plat it. And as part of the planning process, since that is a county arterial, they would be required to pave, the applicants would be required to pave to the half mile from the, from the nearest paved arterial, which is 21st Street. So the north half mile of that. Now, I do want to point out, it would be slightly different, or it would be different if the road was in the city, but since that 151st is in the county, it's a half mile.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. So TF3, so are they able to put single-family homes on a TF3 also, or it has to be?
They are.
They are. So they can do single or duplexes?
That is correct.
Okay. The three, that represents what, 3,000 square foot lots?
3,000 square feet per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit. So on one lot, it'd be 6,000 square feet with a duplex.
That is correct.
So how, how many of these structures can fit in this, in this area?
I don't know that we've done that analysis. We looked at it from the layout that was proposed, and I believe that we've got the number of units that were in the staff report. I don't see it right, right this moment, but I will also defer to the applicant to speak.
All right. Very good. I understand from another related, not related, unrelated case to, to this one, the issue of island annexation does require a county to, I guess, make a declaration that the island annexation will not prevent growth of a city or any other city in Sedgwick County. We talked about that just recently on an unrelated case. If that, and I'm looking, I'm looking at our counselor with that question, I guess. If that, is that the only decision we have to make today? Because again, back to the chairman's question, if we're only making, only making a declaration that this doesn't prevent growth, then I think that's what we need to focus on. But let me, I'd like to hear from the counselor on this question.
Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. And Commissioner Howell, to your question, what's in front of you today is not the annexation matter. So that'll likely be in, I believe, probably the October 5th meeting, oh, you're on 30 days from when we get the request from the city, which I assume we'll get any day now, to make findings. That's one of the criteria and findings you'd have to consider today. You're considering a zoning case under the golden factors and the items you'd normally consider a zoning case.
Okay. And this could be for you or for Scott. Going back to the DAB board, they had a couple of concerns, and I guess two of their concerns that you listed here, suburban sprawl, is that something that the golden factors is focused on?
You know, one of the golden factors is about the context and whether this is appropriate for the context. So I would classify that under that one.
Okay. Because I haven't, I haven't seen that one before. And then loss of agricultural land. I guess I'm curious, is there a shortage that's a concern of the DAB board? I'm not sure how that, why that's on this list.
Well, it was mentioned. I don't want to speak for them, but it is a perspective they shared.
Okay. And then over on the MAPC, it says general concerns of increase in density. Density of what?
Yes, sir. I believe that that was a remark in terms of the density of the residences that would, that the neighbor would anticipate should the zoning be approved.
Okay. So they're worried about the population density of this area?
Yep.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. I'll probably have some questions later, but thank you for the answers to my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for Scott this time. I'll ask for the applicant or agent. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Dennis and all the commissioners. I'm Chris Bohm from Garver, agent for the applicant. Happy to be here this morning to talk about this case. So you're going to start me off with a few questions, so I'll, I'll start right in. When the contract buyers came in as far as schedule, we instantly went at the M A P D with a request for annexation and a request for zoning. So the schedule kind of worked out the way it did. As Scott mentioned in his plan, the utilities for this site, there's an 18-inch sanitary sewer right by St. Teresa's Hospital. And this, through this property is the, is the targeted basin for the routing of that sewer. So that's the city of Wichita utility that they've invested in. Similarly, there's a 24-inch water line at the intersection of 151st and 21st. So naturally, that would be service for water by the city of Wichita. So the request for annexation would have been very likely made at the time of plating if we had not gone through the process in this order. But due to the technicalities of an island annexation, this is just how the schedule kind of bore out for that. The second issue that was brought up here by the bench is the issue of paving of 151st. I don't want to get into the weeds on that, that's a plating issue. However, in research on the right-of-way that KDOT has purchased for the Northwest Bypass, there are actually two locations we could provide access off of 21st Street North. And Scott had proposed, or indicated on the screen, a proposed site layout. What I provided for you is, on this sheet, is a, is an updated model. So on the Northwest Bypass, on the long, if I can get on this thing, on this course right here, where you see that existing access road, that's where they broke access. So there is no access control from right here all the way up to the intersection at 151st. So when we first looked at the KDOT right-of-way, we thought they had access control up to about the 600-foot mark from the intersection. So the county development standards require spacing, particular spacing for entrances. We could meet that with the current access control. And we've been working with Sedgwick County Public Works on talking about how that would look now and in the future. Now, I know that's a plating issue, so, but I just wanted to make mention of it. We can get two access points on 21st Street. If we do that, and on that little diagram I gave you on the aerial photo, we could theoretically not have any access to 151st Street, or emergency access only. How the road paving is triggered and such as that is in the subdivision regulations. Again, we'll work through that during the plating stage of the process. Another thing about the Northwest Bypass is the fact that KDOT's actively buying right-of-way, and it's on their future needs plan, so it will occur at some point in time. We don't know if that's 10 years or 20 years, we just don't know at this time. But, you know, when you think about the Northeast Expressway, or K96, that was built about 30 years ago, particularly when you get to about Oliver, Woodlawn, Rock, Webb, you think about, there are so many multi-family uses that abut it. So this is a very natural spot for this to fit. And in the context of it being 30 years old, it's currently under design to go to 6 li- And in the context of it being 30 years old, it's currently under design to go to six lane, if you can even comprehend that, just in that short time. And you think about how that was filled in, and it's kind of symbiotic in the sense that when you get a facility planned, like the Northwest Bypass, that property owners will take advantage of its proximity. The hospital might be a good example of that. I know it was placed there in the thought that this area would develop over time. So just something to, to make access, or to make mention of. The utilities are there, the water's there, we're very sensitive to the idea that this would be in a location that really brings value to the county and brings value to the City of Wichita. On through the rest of the packet, just so you know, if you look at the next sheet, it's a picture of the site outlined in yellow, and to the east of it, so the property owner to the east has a large parcel, but there is a lot of floodplain on that property. It's in red, you can see it on your sheet, and it's available on the GIS site as well. So the idea that we're island annexing kind of makes sense, because the cost of bringing utilities and such to a parcel that wouldn't have that much yield for the ground that you could recover is really this piece, the one that's just to the west of it and has the access to the utilities similarly. So I just wanted to point that out in reinforcement of ultimately the island annexation. The next email that you see is also the, the contract buyers reached out to Renwick School as well. That's an email from Renwick saying, yes, they, they agree with the idea of the development and their ability to serve students who would be generated from that area. The next email is from Nice Construction, Nice Homes. They expressed their interest in being part of this development, to bring a mix of single-family and two-family homes ultimately when the site is developed. This development group has had very high success with Chalet Ridge, which is a development on 20 acres in southeast Wichita, where they've done a really great mix of two-family and single-family homes, and it builds a sense of community. And in regard to the layout of the platted lots, and Commissioner Howell, it's probably 250, 250 or so lots, I mean, conceptually at this point prior to plating, we don't know quite yet, but it would have a community area, you know, sidewalks, it would build a place of community within that neighborhood. And then going on in the packet that I handed out, the property owner to the west, Mr. Schallenberg has expressed his support of this development, and that property that he owns also is adjacent to the Northwest Bypass right-of-way. And the last sheet is just a, it's marked in green where he owns to the west. So as you think about the growth and the investment that the City of Wichita has made in this corridor, that KDOT is making in this corridor, and the natural extension of our community out to the west, and most certainly within the confines ultimately of the Northwest Bypass, in our view, this is just a great use of the ground, and the commercial at the corner makes sense from the standpoint of every other interchange that you can see on the east side of town on the Northeast Expressway, where that's been used for some kind of commercial development. So with that, we'd ask for your support today, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Let's go back to the question I asked Scott about the sequence of this. I understand that the City of Wichita did vote to ask for an island annexation.
Yes.
So what's, what's the advantage of moving forward for Sedgwick County now, rather than waiting until the island annexation, and at that point in time, let the city make the decision, because we're going to have no control over this decision here in the very near future?
I'm, I'm thinking about your question, which is a valid question. I guess in the view that the Metropolitan Area Planning Department is a joint, is a joint venture between the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, and so it's been through the mechanics of a zone change, and it happens at this time that the governing body in charge of that is the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners. So it's the same zoning code, it implies the same responsibilities of the owner, whether Sedgwick County would zone it or the City of Wichita would zone it. So by virtue of the timing, we're before you today, and they're very eager, the owners, to move forward with the development, and that's why, and I wish the consequences of timing weren't in this fashion, but we find ourselves here today. So it's before you to make a decision, and we just ask for your support.
Okay, but I still have concerns where the, the City of Wichita is going to be ultimately responsible for this property if they, if we approve an island annexation, and now you're asking us to make a decision on something that we're going to have no control over in the future if it's annexed. So if it's delayed until the point when the City of Wichita can vote on this, because they follow the exact same procedure, does that harm your applicants?
In the sense of timing to complete their land transaction and move forward with the project, yes. It would add a month and then probably two months to the process. Once you accepted annexation, it would have to be rescheduled for the City Council of Wichita to consider the zone change request.
But the zone change request is contingent upon annexation?
That is correct.
So everything is moved down because of the annexation requirement? So I don't see how it harms your applicants.
It would be, the zone change would be perfected then once you accepted the annexation request of Wichita, and wouldn't require an additional scheduling of a zone change hearing by Wichita City Council. It would add a little bit of time.
But if they, actually, they did vote to send it over to us, so they are banking on the rezoning, so I guess I'm still concerned about the process of bringing it to us first rather than the governing agency that is going to be responsible for this piece of property.
I wish I could give you more information. That would make your decision easier.
Yeah, I understand. I don't see any other comments or questions right now. I'll go on and ask the public to handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have two individuals signed up to speak today. The first one is James Brooks. Can you approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have five minutes.
My name is James Brooks. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jim Brooks. I live in the Marksville addition to the east of the property in question. I've lived there for over 31 years. I and my neighbors have watched the northwest Wichita area grow and expand into the unincorporated areas of the county. We know and understand that this growth will likely continue. However, the request for an MAPC approval of a TF3 rezoning classification for the 101 acres of Smarsh family land near us appears to be a step too far in my estimation. I do not oppose the building of single-family homes. I adamantly against the allowance of two-family homes or duplexes and any conditional allowance of multifamily structures. The surrounding area to the Smarsh tract is universally large lot, single-family homes, farmsteads, or open farmland and pastures. Existing housing in this area is strictly single-family homes on large lots. The comprehensive plan, also known as the Community Investment Plan, has a section on land use compatibility. It is located on page 27 of the document. Paragraph 1A states, "Higher-intensity development should be discouraged from locating in areas of existing lower-intensity development, particularly established low-density residential areas." It's my conclusion that the allowance of duplexes and multifamily structures would be in opposition to this guidance. Multiple duplex developments are in process or have been completed on the far west and northwest area of Wichita. These buildings are largely cookie-cutter in nature, they're identical design on the outside, and have small yards, no basements, and minimal spacing between structures. The buildings have been erected in a very short period of time. As occupancy grows, so does traffic. As traffic increases, roads become more congested. Nearby intersections that are controlled by stop signs become huge bottlenecks, especially in the morning and late afternoon. Concentrations of school-aged children place extreme duress on the local school system. Dense duplex developments create a huge ripple effect in the surrounding area. Allowing the Smarsh tract to have duplexes and multifamily structures would create unnecessary chaos in our area. The Unified Zoning Code allows 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit in the case of duplexes. If only 50% of the land was developed in the duplexes, the potential result could be around 732 dwelling units. The average household size in Sedgwick County is 2.58. 732 dwelling units could be responsible for a population of over 1,800 residents, much more if family, multifamily units were allowed. In effect, a whole city would be created well beyond the city limits. As a result, local traffic would increase exponentially. Nearby intersections would become very challenging, especially in the morning. The pallor of dust from vehicle traffic that now hangs around the Marksville addition will get even worse. The Renwick School District, USD 267, will be inundated with new students. The St. Mark's School, a K-8 school closest to the land, is already at maxing capacity with no additional capacity in the pipeline. With no current water supply or sewage system in the area, someone is going to incur a great expense to extend the services to this area. I understand the proposed developer would pick up some of these expenses, but I have to believe that much of the expense will fall on taxpayers' shoulders. With only one ingress and egress point shown on site plan, safety of residents could be jeopardized should that entrance become impassable. Ideally, the main entrance and exit should be on 21st Street, but the looming Northwest Expressway apparently precludes having an entry on the north side, funneling all traffic onto 151st, which is currently unpaved and unimproved. The MAPC proposed that the tract would become part of Wichita via island annexation. The eastern edge of this property lies nearly a mile beyond any current city boundary. If allowed, an island of Wichita would be created, surrounded by unincorporated areas of the county. I can only imagine the issues that will arise, will have an area subject to a combination of township, city, county, and state responsibilities. As I have tried to make clear, I believe allowing duplexes or multifamily structures under the TF3 designation is an incoherent and poorly devised plan. I do not oppose the single-family homes. Ideally, this acreage should be left as rural residential. If that is not a workable solution, I would propose that the land be rezoned to single-family 20, or a combination of single-family 20 and single-family 10 use. Implementing these zoning classifications will by its very nature bring change at a slower and more manageable pace of development. Please rescind the TF3 zoning designation and reclassify the land for strictly single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions at this time. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Gary Dick.
I'll reply, thank you, sir.
Very good. We'll skip. Hey, applicant or agent, do you have any rebuttal?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say a couple of things, and then I'll stand for any questions. If we develop the property as it's planned, there'd be about 500 maximum dwelling units. There is a buffer for part of the property to the south on property owned by another individual that helps create a little bit of distance. We do have services, sanitary sewer and water. The development of the sanitary sewer as it stands now will be borne 100% by the developer with no participation by the City of Wichita. They simply don't have any funding for their program till 2026. They will use the City of Wichita Water Extension Program to help bring a main in front of their property, most likely on 21st. So that water's there, and there's a policy established where they pay for those costs by special assessment financing. And again, our goal here is to eliminate any entrances on 151st. That's a plating issue, but since it's been brought up, I'll bring it up again, and have two entry points on the paved 21st Street North. And, you know, the comprehensive plan, and then as you look at that, when you have a new highway facility that's planned, that's going to go from Goddard all the way up to north Wichita and tie into K-96 and make a loop around the city, it's inevitable, and it's, and it's a good thing that, that a city and a county expands with, with a facility such as this. And it will occur, and this is residential and not some higher industrial or commercial use. So it's a known entity, and it just makes sense from a planning standpoint. Again, we'd ask that you support the zone change today. I'll stand for any additional questions.
Thank you. I don't see any additional questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For this moment, Commissioner Howell.
Sorry, I'm slow to the switch there, apologize. Thank you, Chairman. Just want to clarify, so there's, you said there's no entrances on 151st, and that is currently a gravel road, and township will have no impact to this, because again, I just was trying to find out, I think it's only 200 cars per day, but there'll be no impact on that road because there's no entrance to this neighborhood, and the drawing I show right now, it shows a potential neighborhood layout. This is not exactly correct, because you said two entrances on 21st, this only shows, I guess it does show two, doesn't it?
Correct.
I see them there, and then it shows also a dead end to the west, to a half-mile, which goes nowhere to put any, so that may, so if it's developed to the west, that potentially would be, would connect to any future neighborhood that way, potentially.
Correct. Again, it's a concept, so we're moving into the plating realm, but that's fine, I mean, it does mix a little bit. You need to provide, when you plat a piece of ground, access to the adjacent parcels. It's something that planning and Scott's team would require in any case. So we try to think ahead and take advantage of the best areas to connect to adjacent properties. The planning department is always looking for continuity between neighborhoods and connectivity between neighborhoods, so that's a very common practice. In fact, they probably ultimately would want two entrances to the west, to the vacant property to the west, and very likely of the cul-de-sacs that we showed aiming to the south, two of those probably would have an ability to be connected to. Again, it's continuity, it's neighborhood, it's building, it's building an interconnected system, particularly in residential areas.
So one other, I don't think we've talked about this today, but just for clarification, this would remove this agricultural property from the fire district, and Wichita would have tax revenue for their W, Wichita Fire Department would get revenue from city taxes in this area. The loss to the county fire district is a pretty small number. Do we know that number by chance? It's minimal, right? A few hundred, I mean, a few hundred dollars maybe per year total?
Commissioner, we'd take a look at it. It's mostly ag out there, so it'd be minimal, I would believe, but we'll, we'll check it.
Okay. Did you say that the, this, the sanitary sewer that goes to the east, that connects up towards the St. Teresa's Hospital?
It's right adjacent to the southeast corner of St. Elizabeth Hospital. It's an 18-inch sewer main, and it is slated to come right through this property. The study upon, that it was, that's generated to identify the routing comes right through the middle of this property.
And it's deep enough to go through that waterway to your east?
Yes, absolutely, yes. We've already looked at that.
All right.
And it's, it's set to continue southerly from this point as well.
And I'm not familiar with this that much, because 21st Street North is a long ways from my district, but this is a, is this a two-pay, a two-lane, 55 mile-an-hour, two-lane road, good shape, shoulders and things like that?
Yep.
Those can handle quite a lot of cars per day. We have, I'm thinking about Greenwich Road in my district, which is, doesn't have shoulders, really, and it's probably going to be, I just asked Jim Weber, he said this has about, around, around 6,000 cars per day on one direction, and about that going the other direction, so 6,000 cars a day, I'm thinking Greenwich Road in my district, I think has more than that, but quite, I think it's quite a bit more, but maybe I'm wrong about that. So I'm not sure what impact this has. Has anybody from, has anybody done a study in terms of traffic impact on this?
No. No, we haven't done a traffic study. I might make note that the, the Traffic Capacity Manual actually indicates that trips generated per day from a duplex or two-family is less than a single-family home. So a trip generation would show a net reduction in trip generation from a mix, and that's the goal here, is to do a mix. But we don't know what would be single-family or what would be two-family at this time, thus the zone change to TF3.
I see. So, you know, 500 would be if every unit was, if every lot was a, was a twin.
Correct. Right. That would be absolute maximum.
Right. All right. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the, thank you for the answers.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
This time, I'll bring it back to the board. This time, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm very familiar with this area. I built my house in 97, finished it up in 98, just in time for the Halloween flood of 1998. And my home luckily was built top of the area, so I was an island at that point, because everything around me was flooded. As a matter of fact, the very next thing that we're gonna hear today on our agenda item, F, is an intent to help, letter of grant to help alleviate the damage to downstream in the future. And if you take a look at the map that's up there right now, that property just to the east is Dry Creek. And what happened in 98 was Dry Creek broke over into the north fork of Caskin, which then came down through Rainbow Lake, where I live, and on down through the Dell and on out. So it flooded a large portion of the area. So this is an area that's very familiar with me. But I am still concerned with the questions that I ask several times on whether or not that this is the right body to make decisions on the future of this property, because it's not going to be something that we are gonna have any control over in the future. The right body to make this decision is the one that's gonna be responsible for providing the services, the sewer, the water, the streets, the fire, all of the services that are going to go to this piece of property. And this body is not the one that's gonna be responsible for any of that in the future. So that's truly my biggest concern at this point in time, is why are we making this decision? We know for a fact that the City of Wichita has voted to island annex this property. And as long as I've been on the board, and I served nine years on the MAPC, that's where I met Chris, he knows that I've never seen an island annexation that's been refused. I can't recall one. And so I really think that this decision should be made by the governing body that's responsible for this piece of property in the future. And that's really where I'm coming from with this. So with that in mind, we'll see what the rest of the commission has to say after I make a motion. But I move that Board defers this zoning case until November 16, 2022, so that the island annexation matter can be considered and concluded prior to any final action on this zoning case. We have a motion in a second. Do we have a discussion on this motion? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, we did go forward right now, well, first of all, the applicant did talk about this is gonna, this is gonna be an expense in terms of their planning, overall planning. So I hate to see a delay. I guess my question would be, if we've approved this today, and it's still contingent upon their annexation, Wichita has a choice not to annex it based on current zoning, or they would have the chance to revisit it again. What is this, why, again, I assume that they would agree with us, but if they disagreed with us, they would not approve the annexation under that zoning. They would have the chance to visit that when they consider the annexation, would
Commissioner Howell, would you like me to address your question?
Yes.
Again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. The process from this point would be, as I mentioned, the island annexation will likely be on the October 5th Board of County Commissioners' agenda, and you're to make findings under the state statutes on that. If, for example, you would make findings to approve the island annexation, the City of Wichita still has to, subsequent to that, adopt an ordinance to actually complete the annexation. Then also, under state law, that annexation ordinance, even if they did it, let's say they just did it the next week, for example, even if they did it that quickly, the annexation ordinance would not become effective until the day after the election. There's a statute that says if an annexation, usually an annexation's effective upon public, an ordinance being published. However, if it's within 60 days of an election, it's the day after the election. So that's how it would work in this particular case. So with the motion that's been, that the chairman's made, that's in front of you, it would only slightly delay, I think, because the zoning case, the city could schedule it, you know, shortly after the annexation. It's really, the jurisdiction would transfer, November 9th is the earliest the jurisdiction could transfer, from this being a county zoning case to a city zoning case, and it would, that would happen as a matter of law upon the annexation becoming effective, if that happens. So, so you're right, there would be another, there would be another requirement even after you adhere the annex, island annexation for the city council to take it up, and there's gonna be a bit of a delay before all this becomes finalized and effective anyways, just by virtue of how the statutes work.
Let me restate what you said, and let me see if I can say it in my simple terms here.
Sure.
Everything seems to be contingent upon everything passing. If any of these things doesn't pass, the entire project's gonna be basically suspended, it looks like.
I think it's correct, Commissioner Howell, and the statutes don't really spell out, the annexation has to happen first, the zoning has to happen first, but I think with what the applicant's requesting here and what they have in mind, they're gonna need city services. I think you're correct. I think both those hurdles would have to be cleared.
And this TF, this TF3 allows for agricultural, it allows for single-family homes, it allows for lots of things. Only thing it doesn't allow for is something that's more, I guess, down the list, you know, a concrete plant, for example, would not be allowed, which wouldn't be allowed at right now, anyway. So I'm struggling, I don't quite see why the delay. I'm willing to support a delay if it's really necessary, but I don't know that we, I'm not sure what word you used, Chairman, but you said we're losing control, we have no control, or we're giving, I'm not sure exactly what you said, but we're giving up something. If we do this today, and the city somehow does something we don't like, we've lost our ability to make change at that point, I guess. I'm not sure exactly what you said now, but I guess I'm struggling with seeing that part of it. So, thank you, that's all my, I'm actually fine with a delay, but I would rather just go ahead and move forward today. That's my opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, everybody, for the information and the answers to a lot of the questions. I am somewhat, I'm supportive of this project. I'm respectful for the jurisdictions that rule on it, so I'm a little bit perplexed as well, as Commissioner Howell. I'm okay with supporting this growth, and we're in a, we're in a county, we're on the edge of the cities, that we're fortunate that in, of the 105 counties, we're one of the, one of the handful that are still growing, and people wanna move and grow, and I've always been in favor of that. I know it gets uncomfortable for those that have, residents that have been there for a while, and then it, then growth happens around you, and that probably wasn't your intent when you, when you bought 20 years ago, or 10, or whatever it is. So I am highly respectful for that. I live out where I live, my wife and I had the same deal where we were backed up to a field and then found out that it was, this is before I was elected, found out it was getting platted and a target going in, everything else. I'm like, holy cow. I didn't use the right word there. And we ended up moving and whatever, so I, and today, that's just the world. So I am supportive of this, if that, if that helps. I really would wanna make sure that we don't, under the annex, and the next step comes back to us, and all of a sudden, this development could not happen, would be of great, more concern to me than, that's way in the bad with the good, but I am supportive of it, and if it happens, that's fine today, or if we have some assurances that, okay, when annex happens, that the city's gonna be able to go forward with their, all the water and road issues and things like that. So it's kinda where I'm at. So, talked a little bit in circles, apologize for that, but I'm in agreement with Commissioner Howell on this, on this development. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. We do have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item F, Approval of a Letter of Intent for Grant Application, Caskin Creek Watershed.
Maureen Lynn.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Madam Commissioners. You got it? Okay, I am before you today to discuss a letter of intent in cooperation with the City of Wichita, to FEMA, for our brick grant for the Caskin Creek project. You may, this may sound familiar. We were here last September with a similar request for a letter of intent for the 2021 application. This is for the 2022 application. And a BRIC is the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program. It was first authorized back in 2018. It was, had a total funding as of last year for our first application on the BRIC, was there was $1 billion for all BRIC activities. We have learned, the Notice of Funding Opportunity came out here in mid-August, and we learned that the 2022 funding is $2.295 billion. They have more than doubled the available funding for all BRIC activities. And of that, for the national competition, of which we are focusing on that program, $2.133 billion is available in that program. Each of the national competition projects is capped at $50 million, and grants require a minimum of 25% federal match. As I noted, we were notified that we did not receive our grant application from last year. We were notified on August 1st that the application was unsuccessful. At that time, we found out there were 788 applications for the national competition, 53 total projects were selected. We did find out that we were in the 69th percentile, which is not bad at all for an initial first application. About 250 applications scored higher than us, and about 540 scored lower. We had an opportunity to talk about what we can do better, and also decide if we wanted to move forward, the city and the county wanted to move forward with another application process, and that, they don't waste any time at the federal level. The next LOI is due by September 15th. We just found out about the results of everything in August, and September 15th is the next letter of interest. For those of you that are not aware, the main BRIC objectives are to support state and local governments, encourage innovation, reduce risks specifically from natural hazards, minimize impacts on the disaster relief fund, and this is actually something that's new for this year. One of the objectives for the BRIC grant is to support the adoption and enforcement of building codes. You may recall, our application from last year was two dry detention sites, one located, both of them are District 3, one is located off of 167th and south of 21st Street, the other location is a little further south of Kellogg, off 135th and south Pawnee. It is estimated that this project will remove 149 buildings from the floodplain. It has the potential of alleviating flooding at seven different locations on streets and roads that cuts off 202 homes during those high-water events. We also estimate that 450 acres of land will be removed from the floodplain. Even though it was just a year ago, before, if we do decide to move forward with an application for 2022, we will reevaluate the cost of the project. It was a $40 million project last year. We don't anticipate any changes in the scope of the project, and any major changes in the cost, but that will be evaluated. So at this time, we don't know exactly what the match would be, would be. Again, the project sites located in northwest and southwest Sedgwick County. The feedback we received on the first application included such items as trying to emphasize a little bit more critical facilities and structures that are impacted, that support the community and economy, better defining the actual program and the consequences of not completing this project. They want to, an expansion of the description of downstream impacts that this flooding has, and a description of the proportion of the population that will be positively impacted by implementing this project. And one of the other comments was to better describe how the project will be implemented, especially those details related to natural solutions. The BRIC grant and FEMA is very much interested in, and give extra points for solutions that are man-made, or, excuse me, that are natural versus man-made, such as like concrete walls and things like that. The project funding, as we understand it now, and will reevaluate, but as of the application we turned in last year, was a $40 million total project. The BRIC funding would supply 30 million of that cost, which would leave us our 25% or $10 million at the local level. The city has once again requested the county split that contract, that local match equally, which would be an ask of $5 million. And the CIP that was approved just a few weeks ago does have $5 million allocated in 2025. A little idea of the timeline we're under right now, the NOFO, the Notice of Funding Opportunity was released in mid-August. The letter of intent that we're, I am presenting here now is due September 15th. It is a co-sponsor with the City of Wichita, therefore both the mayor and the chairman would be required to sign that letter of intent and send it over to Kansas Department of Emergency Management. As a reminder, this is a sub-application, which means there's basically two tiers. We need to be approved by the state level, Emergency Management, and then if they feel our application is warranted, then it would be submitted by them to FEMA for consideration. So the letter of intent is letting, basically gives a brief overview of what our project is. They review it at the state level and then send it on to FEMA if we are granted that opportunity. If we are granted the opportunity, an actual application will be due to them by the end of the year, December 31st. They will review those applications and send in the packages by January 27th to FEMA, and then sometime in the summer, again, we will notify the results of that application. We have not been through this before. Last year was our first opportunity, so we're not sure of the contracting period with FEMA on this, but we do know that they want this project to be completed within three years of award of the contract at the federal level. That would make this basically a 2026 completion, completed project. So today, I'm here requesting that you authorize staff to submit the letter of intent and authorize the chairman to sign. I will stand for any questions.
Well, thank you, Lynn. I appreciate the update. I understand Wichita is primarily responsible for writing this grant, correct?
Correct. They have, they have and are going to rehire a grant specialist, writing specialist, as well as wood environmental solutions, to help with the overall study and work on several of those issues that were brought up by Emergency Management and FEMA for, that can boost our application.
Okay. Well, we just need to learn from the first time and make sure that we make adjustments so that we can get this moved through. I know that this is on our federal legislative agenda item for the future. This is an important project for the western Sedgwick County. I appreciate the commission's support, and it's the last time we applied for it, and I hope that we can be a little more successful on this application as we move forward. I don't see any questions at all right now, so I move that we take the appropriate action. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Say none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item G, Adoption of the Calm Care Licensed Direct Service and Certified Community Behavioral Health Centers Support Compensation Plans.
Maureen Tim.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. First of all, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the proclamation for Suicide Prevention Week. It really illustrates the importance of the work that organizations like Calm Care and other community partners and physicians in the community do every day to help address suicide as an issue in our community. It's an important issue, and I appreciate you recognizing that today. And I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to present a pay plan for our newly certified community behavioral health clinic at Calm Care. I'd like to thank HR staff, especially Bethany Corral, Anna Meyerhoff Cole, and Sheena Smuts for the work that they've, they've done closely with Kathy Wegner and Joan Tammany from Calm Care. It's excellent work, and they've developed a nice pay It's excellent work, and they've developed a nice pay plan that we'd like to implement. After a great deal of effort by Calm Care leadership, the organization was recognized as a CCBHC in May of this year. This new designation brought about a new reimbursement model for services provided by Calm Care staff. The Kansas State Medicaid Plan has been modified to allow for CCBHCs to be reimbursed on a cost basis model, which has created an opportunity for expanded services, increased access, and enhanced revenue. The foundation of that revenue is provider staff delivering services directly to patients. As we've discussed, staffing shortages have impacted Calm Care's ability to provide services. One complicating factor in filling and retaining staff has been our compensation model, and that's to the point where Calm Care has lost experienced staff to CCBHC organizations in Oklahoma. This newly designed pay plan recognizes education certifications and licensure required to deliver specialty health care in a competitive market that is facing nationwide staff shortages. But the benefits of the CCBHC status go beyond revenue opportunities. For the first time in the more than 20 years that I've worked with Calm Care, they're able to implement an evidence-based practice known as ACT, or Assertive Community Treatment. This team-based intensive approach, service approach, was financially unsustainable under the previous reimbursement rates. This new service has already started to help members of our community because of the new CCBHC status. Finally, I'd like to thank all of the dedicated staff working at Calm Care every day to make a positive impact in the lives of the people that they serve. It's a remarkable group, and I'm proud to represent them. And now I'd like to turn it over to Sheena Schmutz, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to talk about the mechanics of the pay plan.
Morning, Sheena.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheena Schmutz, Chief Human Resources Officer, you have been briefed on the proposed Calm Care pay plan that involves two separate plans for those in direct support and those in supportive roles for the CCBHC. I've also provided you a handout. These plans have been vetted with Calm Care, County Administration, and the Division of Human Resources. These rates are based on information for competitive market rates specific to the CCBHCs and the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Individual employees have been reviewed and placed on the pay plan according to their time and position. Employees employed with Cedric County Calm Care on September 11th will be eligible to receive retroactive pay back to May 8, 2022. Positions not listed on the pay plan will receive the general pay adjustment of 8% in January of 2023. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, I know you've talked to every single commissioner at length on this, and it shows up from the lights that aren't on. Again, I sincerely appreciate all the time and effort that was put in by the staff and by HR on looking at this new pay plan. We're still 200 short in Calm Care right now. And hopefully, adjusting the pay will do some of the same things that's happened over in the jail. Our sheriff keeps reporting back to us that he has people that are now going into the training program to be deputies in the sheriff's department because of the pay raises that we provided in those areas. So I truly hope that this helps us start filling those positions. The difference that I see actually is that a lot of our positions require a pipeline. You don't come out, most of these positions, out of high school and are qualified to fill these positions. So hopefully, this stimulates people to enter into that pipeline. It's not going to solve our issues overnight, because we have to have a pipeline in order to be able to get the folks there. But we're doing a lot of things in the county in order to be able to, to support the ways to enhance this pipeline for the future. I mentioned it earlier, where we're trying to get a fellowship, that's for some of the higher-level people in Calm Care. We're working with KU and WSU to look at the new Health Science Center downtown, someplace, and we're looking at co-locating Calm Care with that new facility so that they can use their applied learning model in order to be able to help build the pipeline for the future. So hopefully, with people being able to see what this new pay plan has to offer, they can enter into that pipeline and help us. The other thing is that I'm hoping that it will have some more immediate effect, because people outside in other areas may see our new pay plan as a step up from what they're doing now, so that we can start filling some of those positions that we have open, because these are critical positions that we're looking at. We've talked long and hard about maybe expanding ICT1, or maybe having a mobile mental health facility, or, not facility, but staff, in order to be able to go out and help people. But none of those can happen without staff. People come up and ask us, hey, we need to expand this, but we understand the concern, we just can't expand it because we don't have a staff to expand it. So hopefully, as this moves forward, we can get the staff in place to be able to provide the services that the public needs here in Cedric County. I told you in my private meetings with you all that I've got a little concern about some of the higher pay ranges, but the rest of them I'm satisfied with. We'll see how it works out. I'm supportive of this. I still don't see any lights on, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the new compensation plans and approve retroactive pay to May 8th for active employees with Cedric County on September 11th, 2022. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Again, Sheena, thank you. Tim, thank you. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item H, Primary Election Update.
Angela, welcome.
Good morning. Angela Cadillo, Election Commissioner for Cedric County. I'll move this microphone way down here. We've talked a lot about the 2022 primary, but this is your official update with some numbers. Just getting into voter registration, you'll see early in the year, we had about 321,697, so about 321,700 registered voters eligible. You'll see that throughout the year, these moved up so far, and these are first of the month numbers. And at the time of the election, we have almost 330,000 registered voters. We added over 5,000 new registered voters from the end of June to Election Day. So again, these are first of the month numbers. You'll see that most of those were processed in July, in July through, July until the election, and that's because a lot of those came in at the end of June. We are still working voter registration. Obviously, there was a voter registration stop date. Registration continued to come in, and we're working those. We have probably about 4,000 registrations that we're still working. Not all of those will be new registrations. Those include updates to addresses and things of that nature. Looking at the turnout, we had a record-high turnout in Cedric County, a record-high turnout in the state, right over 45%. When you compare that to previous years, you can see that primary elections in the, even in some presidential years, don't even get quite that high. And then in the midterms, they're usually closer to the 20%, so we definitely doubled that. Another side note, over 90,000 people voted in person on Election Day. In the 2020 general, only 62,000 to 63,000 people voted in person, so we did have a lot more people out at our polling sites. Moving forward to the November general election, typical turnout is between 50 and 55%. If we had 55% turnout, we're looking at 181, almost 182,000 voters. So that's good, it's going in the right direction. People are wanting to participate in elections. Trends appear to be moving to Election Day polling place voting. I say appear because 2020 was an interesting year. We had a lot of mail ballots, but COVID was in the mix there, so we'll just be keeping an eye on that and see where we go from there. We did have some lines in the primary. We will expect to potentially have lines in the general. We have not been able to adjust the precincts, to split any of those out in the last two years. So leading up to redistricting, there's a freeze on making changes to precincts. The law states that whole precincts must be assigned to the same polling place. So when you have really big precincts, they still have to go to the polling place. So that's just a thing that we're looking at to see. We'll evaluate going forward the need to add new polling places in 2023. You may recall that, I think it was 2008, polling places reduced from about 145 down to the 60s. And then over the, over the years leading up to now, they've been able to add several more back, but we'll look and see if, if we can add some more back and kind of balance that. A reminder that in November, voters have three easy choices to vote. They can choose when to vote in that election, they can choose to vote by mail or in person at an early location. If voters do choose to vote on Election Day, there could be some lines at some of our busier polling places. We are trying to put together some maps that will indicate the locations of the busier polling sites, and we expect those will be available by early October for the public to view, so they can make their decisions. And that's all I have.
Well, I appreciate it. I know that you've had some concerns on your staffing levels, and you presented them during our board meeting, our budget hearings. And I'm still willing to listen. I want to make sure you understand that. But again, I think that there is, are ebbs and flows in your process, and we need to think outside the box on how that we can fill those positions in the future. More and more people are going to be voting, I'm very pleased with that. We need to make sure that, that that's available for everyone to be able to cast their vote in every election. But we need to make sure that we have the right mix in your staff in order to be able to meet the needs. So I'm not, I have not turned off your request, but I'd like a lot more data, just as I said during the budget hearings, before that we move forward with anything in that area. Again, I hope everyone gets out to vote in November. It's an important election coming up, and I am certain that our election office will be prepared, and that the election will be just as our primary was. It will be fair, and it will be open to everyone that is eligible to vote. It will be accurate, and that the discussion that we keep hearing around election fraud is non-existent in Cedric County. So I don't see any other comments, I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move to receiving file. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on September 1st, 2022.
Joe, we haven't seen you for a while. You've been on vacation.
It's been a little while. Part vacation, part conference, and glad to be back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And so, good morning to you, Ms. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director, for the record. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 1st has resulted in three items for your consideration. The first one is the Lone Star ProMaster 3500, which is a 3.6-liter V6 van for the Department on Aging. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from the State of Oklahoma contract, which was SW0797C for fiscal year 2022. It's with the company Creative Bus Sales, and it's in the amount of $129,492. Item number two, Scheduling and Payment Management for Hospital Guard Duty for Sheriff's Office. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Hart Halsey LLC. They are doing business as extra-duty solutions at the rates listed, and they're establishing contract, we're establishing contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. And our final item is Temporary IT Project Manager for Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to accept the low-responsive bid, and that's for candidate number one from Soft Sages LLC at the rate listed. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just going back to the first item out of those three, what's the delivery on that van?
I believe it was going to take about three or four months. Do we have a... Commissioner Tim Kaufman. We anticipate three months on delivery of that van.
So it'll probably be in December, probably.
Correct.
And we don't have a driver currently that will be able to operate this van, so we're going to park it when it gets here?
We do, we do have drivers that will be able to fill, and we're continually trying to hire van drivers. We will have a driver that'll be able to drive that van.
So this is money that's sourced from that $500,000 we approved, I think, in last year's budget, right?
That's correct.
So the purchase of the van is covered in the $500,000, but the operation of that van, where's that money going to come from?
We are replacing a van that was part of the fleet that has exceeded its life expectancy, and so those costs were built into the budget for the department, and so they'll be able to fund the operation and the maintenance of the van. The biggest advantage to purchasing this van this way, using the funds that you provided through the budget process, is that we don't have KDOT restrictions, and so we'll be allowed to serve more people in the community than we have in the past with other KDOT-funded vans.
Is the van we're replacing, did it have KDOT restrictions?
It did.
Okay. And it doesn't talk, it talks about, this is only planned to be used till 100,000 miles, and at that point, that's the life of the vehicle?
That's about the life expectancy on these types of vehicles, because they are transporting oftentimes individuals that may have a wheelchair with them, and so that increases the weight significantly.
Well, I certainly do support the transportation program that this is providing. I'm just, all surprises taken on this long for this to be before the Commissioners, and I'm concerned about the, again, I trust what you, your answer today, that we'll have the money to operate this van to make sure that it provides services to the seniors in our community that need this, need this transportation. So this is a step in the right direction, I'm just, so I guess we'll have to pay for it in 2022, and it should show up hopefully this year, it sounds like, and we have the money to operate it. So again, I'll be very supportive of the, of the recommendation today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any other questions, move to approve recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Chairman, Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items J through double-letter AF.
Move to approve Julia through Alpha Foxtrot. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I don't believe we have any legislative issues today. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, any committee reports? I just want to remind everyone, we heard at the beginning, but we have Zubalee this Saturday, and we hope to see everyone out at Zubalee. And anything else? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Other. Any Commissioners have anything during other? I want to correct something that I said at the beginning of the meeting. I said that the Patriots' Day Car Show was on September 11th, it is, but that hours are 9:00 to 11:00 on September 11th out at the Dole VA. So if anyone has a cool car or wants to go out and see the car show, I want to make sure that they have an opportunity. I don't see anything else in other. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We don't have an executive session scheduled today. I don't know of anything else that's on our agenda. Does any Commissioners have anything else we need to discuss? Seeing nothing, adjourned. Thank you all.
I was going to ask about that.
I was going to ask about that.
You have signed this here. You're supposed to sign that.